All right, it is seven o'clock. I'm gonna call our May 5 meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, up first, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Pershman.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Mack. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right. We do not have anyone here tonight for community comments, so the next item on the agenda is presentations and reports, and we have employee service awards. And this evening, we get to award three of the best in the business. Up first, we have Brian Madsen, who I can't believe it's been five years. Like, those COVID times really... Long, long days, long weeks, long hours, but quick years. So Brian joined our team five years ago and is part of the building inspections team and has done a great job, always willing to help out even when somebody sees that there's 10 minutes before the meeting and has a question about the deck that she wants to put on her house. Always helpful and a great member of the team, so thank you. Glad you're spending your time with us, and we're so thankful for your service.
Yeah, just thinking about the COVID times, like, we used to have a little coffee table out in the stairwell, and Brian would pick up his inspection reports and then take them out. But if you wanna think about Brian, think about someone out in the field who represents us every day and is so kind and thoughtful, and when there's a lot of building inspectors out there that have a reputation for almost enjoying catching somebody not doing something right, just a super guy to have around the office and represent us every day, so thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Maybe we'll do all the recognitions and then pictures, which I know is what you're here for.
Paul is.
He heard there are juicy Lucy's being served.
All right, up next, we have Brent Merrick, who is celebrating his 15th Carver-aversary this weekend, I think, right?
Seventeenth, yeah.
Yeah, a couple of weeks, so Brent joined council, or joined the city of Carver shortly after I moved here. So I remember back in the day in the Chaska Herald, reading about the new city manager and the hiring process and who voted for who. And Brent has been a tremendous addition to the team. You're such an asset to the city of Carver. There have been so many times where we have been in, not tight spots, because I think that's a negative connotation, but just like had a really tricky...
Complex.
Problem, complex, yeah, to solve. And like specifically, I'm thinking of like Missy's and the whack and sack and the issues that we had there. And you know that Brent, for better for worse, and maybe to the detriment of his social life and his sleep schedule, but just keeps thinking about these things.
Social life? What's that?
Next morning, he called me, he's like, "I think I've got this figured out." It's like, of course you do. Like, that's what Brent does. He is a problem solver. So I appreciate the 15 years that you have put in both here and when you're on trips and thinking about things and all, everything that's involved. You've worked hard, and please know how much I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
He won't say nice things about himself, so I will.
Please don't.
I think that Brent is a big piece of why we all keep coming back and why Carver's a really great place to work and why we're celebrating five years and 25 years and seven years and eight years that his leadership is unmatched and he's really fantastic to work for.
Thank you, Brent. Last but not least is Mr. Paul Schultz. I like to give a hard time every once in a while, mostly because he does it to me. Every time I see you, every time you see me. Paul has been with the city for 25 years, and Paul has seen a lot in those 20 years. How many plow trucks did we have when you started working here?
Just one.
Okay. How many staff did we have?
Three.
Wow. So we've grown a little bit, and you've...
That was with...
Really?
City Park and then two buses.
Wow.
So wait, wait, there was three total? I thought, not the three that were up at the... Okay, that were up at the public works. Patty?
It was Patty, myself, and Larry.
Okay.
Well, actually, Ken was out there, but he retired with us.
Is there anybody else you want to add? Anything else you want to... Do you want to do this? No, I mean, you name it, Paul knows where the bodies are buried, both literally and figuratively. And if you've got a question, he knows the answer, or he knows somebody who knows somebody who knows somebody who can get you the answer or whatever you're looking for. So I appreciate you. I know you work really hard for the city, and thanks for spending 25 years here. All right, what else do you have?
Yeah, I think one of Paul's greatest attributes, I think, if you spend any time with Paul, you know that he just loves Carver and everything about it and the people that love... If you love Carver, he loves you and he'll support you. And if you think about all the changes that he's gone through, you'd think, at the end of the day, you'd have someone who's inflexible and maybe crabby, and I've relied on Paul more times than I can remember. And as you all know, I'm mechanically not inclined, and so Paul has been there to tell me about the less-than-ideal ideas that I've had about certain pieces. But at the end of the day, when you, when people are looking around for something to get done, it's the first, one of the first names people say is like, "Paul Schultz around," and he's just there, willing to help. And he's great at it, but he's an even better person and friend to a lot of people, including myself, so thank you, Paul.
Let's give these gentlemen what they came here for, some pictures. All right, should we do Brian first?
Boots.
Oh, I thought you were gonna...
You were out in here.
Right now.
He likes to go white boots.
This doesn't come with a ham. I'm sorry.
You're lucky that I knew. Wait, did you get him a ham once?
Yeah, we didn't get him a ham. This is awkward.
Give him a chicken.
I just got my idea.
I was just looking for a Chinese.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Oh, you got some mayonnaise for Brent.
What'd you do with that ham?
Yeah.
We just brought jar of mayonnaise.
Helmets.
Congratulations.
Yeah, we've never heard of this before.
He made a joke about, "What do you get for Employee of the Year? Do I get the ham for Christmas?" And I was like, "Okay, let's do it." So I gave him, like, "Whoever won for part-time that year, I gave you both ham." Like, it'd be, it'd be, like, a three-pound ham.
There, I got you a lot of ham. Good job.
This is for you.
Is it a ham?
This is on Paulie's.
Okay. At the end, I want a picture of the two of them.
Oh, you get your son a ham.
Yeah, I hope this way you can...
I got the red.
Gotta take three, yep, there you go. Okay, give me some teeth. Okay, now I'm gonna feed you together.
And then?
Oh, all this.
That's for you.
The bag?
Yeah, just to keep it safe for later. I keep it with this... Oh, I saw there's that helmet over there. Did you send that to your kids?
No, they don't smile.
Thank you, guys.
Congrats, guys.
Congrats.
Paul, I think this means we're getting old.
I just made 25.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see, moving on, we have no public hearings tonight. Can I get a motion to consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Pershman?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pascoe. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. All right, we have, our first business item is the sign ordinance. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna wait for the screen to pop up. Okay, a couple of actions before you, so reviewing the sign ordinance. So there's an adoption of an ordinance before you tonight, a resolution for summary publication in the newspaper. So what that means is that we can do a small portion of the ordinance in the paper instead of the full thing, saves us a couple dollars, and then there's a policy to consider as part of this agenda item, too. So as the city council is very aware, we've been working on the sign code for a while. I would say we've done a comprehensive review of the entire ordinance. We've talked about this with several, several groups. We got some really meaningful feedback from the Carver Business Alliance, some community groups in the community, which has shaped the ordinance and the policy that are before you tonight. So the city council worked pretty hard on the ordinance, got it to a spot where you felt comfortable passing it over to the planning commission, who's responsible for their review as well, since this section of the code is part of the zoning ordinance. So the planning commission reviewed it a few times, held a public hearing, and then provided recommendation to the city council. So outside of the ordinance, I want to highlight the policy that you're considering tonight because it's unique to Carver. I think it's an idea that other people might replicate if it goes well for us, just because it's something that a lot of people try to figure out and struggle to figure out, but I think we maybe did, I hope. So what the policy includes is that groups that are holding an event in the city of Carver will have permission via the permit to put signs on city-owned property. So some really key locations where we sometimes see signs pop up that are not permitted, we have to remove them. But knowing that there are community events and groups that are holding events specific for Carver residents, people in the area, we want to partner with them to allow for signage for their events. So through the permitting process, they would be able to put signage at places like City Hall, Gazebo Park, Depot Park, Community Park, Ironwood Park, so some of those main thoroughfares through the city of Carver to promote their events. So that's the policy. The ordinance, I would say, was a full rewrite. The planning commission reviewed it over two meetings, their March meeting. They held a public hearing at their April meeting. They didn't receive any feedback from any members of the public. But provided, as some of you know, the planning commission is notorious for catching me on formatting things and grammar cleanup, so they did a really great job cleaning up the ordinance, getting it back to a spot where they recommended it on a 5-0 vote back to you. So that's the version that's in the packet tonight, is that version that was reviewed and recommended by the planning commission. So I'll have the ordinance up if we want to go through any sections or areas of the sign code. Brent, Dave, and I worked on it pretty heavily together. There probably are 20 different drafts of it between the three of us, just different versions. So I'll open it up for discussion, but again, three actions before you tonight, the ordinance, the summary publication, and then the temporary signage policy as well.
Thoughts, questions, comments?
I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything, or if we can talk about... So in the CBD down here, the bars and some, they have different illuminated lights in the windows. Have we, or is this called out in here specifically that that's going to remain okay?
That was, you go to the section that you have that...
Page six.
Okay.
So they're, they are allowed, Dave can probably speak to the interior. The only thing that is probably, might be an issue for some of the signs is our current ordinance, or this proposal doesn't allow animation of those signs. So commonly viewed as a distraction while driving if a sign is moving. But as far as having a neon sign or brightly lit, I think a previous version had intensely lit. We realized that that probably wasn't gonna have any sort of definition that could be validated to the impacted party, so that was removed. But there is, as I previously said, a piece related to animation of a sign.
Can you show me exactly where that is so I can see the wording again? I did read through this, but there was a lot of...
It's on the top of page six, if you look at...
Top of page seven.
Sorry, it's five of the ordinance, page five of the ordinance.
It says, number two, "No signs shall have blinking, flashing, or fluctuating lights or other illuminating devices which have a changing light intensity, brightness, or color, except those in compliance with..."
Okay, so if you had one that said like, "Open," and it went O-P-E-N and flashed through that word, that is considered then prohibited here?
Correct.
And then if you go to page five, though, there is, there is a provision just in the prohibited sign section. It would be F. Actually scaled that back a little bit. It says that interior and exterior animated signs and flashing signs, it used to say interior and exterior animated signs, flashing signs, and signs that are intensely illuminated were prohibited. And we, to Brent's original point, we just tried to make that a little less ambiguous. I think intensely illuminate, intensely illuminated is gonna be hard to define or really enforce in a meaningful way. And a lot of businesses have signs that, that light up because you have to see them at night. And so we got rid of the intensely illuminated part, but we kept the animated and flashing component to that, so...
Talk to me when it says, "However, changing signs are permitted." So... I mean, I...
Hometown Bank?
Yes, that's a good one. So it shows the temperature, open hours.
Yeah, and I believe...
Just trying to see how people reading a sign that goes from the time to the temperature to copies on sale today, it's different than seeing O-P-E-N, O-P-E-N, so...
Just for some context, Councilmember Mack, so this is a language that we didn't change. So this is in your current ordinance, so we're not aligned with it. It will take, as with anything, we'll take feedback from the council, but it's not, it's... We probably frankly have signs that are violating the ordinance right now. So it's a good discussion point, because if you want it in, if it's left in, we're going to enforce it as an adopted ordinance. If you take it out, then we won't.
And signs that are changing signs, that's defined in your zoning ordinance. So a changing sign means only electronic or electronically controlled time, temperature, and date sign. That's it. So those are things that apparently were okay when the sign ordinance was drafted. People see, I think, a value to having, if you're gonna have changing copy on the sign, those are the things that you can have, rather than a constant, you know, changing letters or other things.
The scroll-in sign, right.
Yeah.
Can you read that one more time for the zoning part? Was it allowed?
It says, "Changing sign means an electronically or electrically controlled time, temperature, and date sign."
Okay, so that's all that's technically allowed right now. I'm gonna assume that, do some of our signs in town that had that smoke-a-monkey have other things that are displayed on their sign besides hometown bank, besides the time?
They do, but I'm trying to think. I don't know that it rotates through. I think it has the option of changing, because like I remember seeing a like, "Now hiring" sign. But I don't think it's like, "Now hiring, specials on lattes, time and temperature." I think it stays pretty stagnant.
And dynamic...
That's not a great example of a changing sign.
Well, I'm just saying, because if, if they did it, they would be out of compliance as...
Well, there's also dynamic display signs. So there's all kinds of different types of signs. So dynamic displays are okay, and that is, I don't want to read you that definition because it's seven lines long. But your sign ordinance says, where is it? It is on the top of, or sorry, the bottom of page seven. That's where it talks about dynamic display signs. And I think the important thing there is, you go down to... So those aren't allowed in the historic district, first of all. But if you go to F2, it talks about the message has to be static, and then the transition from one display to another has to be instantaneous without, you know, special effects is what it says here. I mean, I think the point is to avoid distractibility and other things. Again, that's my guess. That's probably the policy rationale behind it. So dynamic display signs are allowed under 7F, which, as long as you meet those height requirements and that static dynamic display requirement, and you're not in the historic district, then, then it's okay. I don't know how many permits you see airing for dynamic displays, probably some here and there, but...
Yeah, Hometown is the only one that has it.
Okay. Well, Fleet Farm has something up there, too, on their sign, but I think it's the gas prices, so it doesn't change enough. Okay, so I'll let everyone else comment.
You know, I don't really have any suggested changes, and that's only because we've been through this so many times. But I'm really happy about this. The easy route to take would have been to say no, because we couldn't find precedence for this in any of our cohort communities, or I think anywhere in the metro area for that matter. So I am looking forward to seeing how this works, how this can benefit the community, and Carver will have maybe set precedence for neighboring communities to follow.
Kayla?
I first of all want to thank the planning commission for their very detailed go-through of all of this. I was truly amazed by the little things that they caught, inconsistencies and things like that, that I don't know if I would have caught them, and I was very impressed, and they put a lot of effort into it. I agree with Eric. I'm really interested to see how this policy plays out. I think it's gonna be a good option. I think it's a good compromise. I know a lot of community groups were concerned that things that they are traditionally advertised for suddenly would not be advertised, and that was a big concern. And I think that our policy addresses that, and I'm very hopeful that it will continue to serve the community.
You have your last thing?
No, I just wanted to mull over a little bit more about my questions and the answers that I had, so I'm good.
I echo Kayla's appreciation for the planning commission and for the three of you guys who did most of the heavy lift before it even got to them. This is something, I think, I like to give Eric a hard time, saying that Brent came up with it, because Eric said it first, and I didn't care for the idea, and then Brent said it, and I loved it. So Brent, thanks for coming up with such a terrific idea. No, I, I appreciate thinking outside of the box and giving, you know, I'm just kidding you. Give you all the credit. But I think this was another one of the things, you know, that we're talking about, about problem solving and thinking about a different way of doing things that will accomplish, hopefully, both what we're trying to accomplish, but also hopefully benefit the businesses and the nonprofits and the charitable organizations in our community that want to put a sign up for a pork chop feed. So I appreciate this. It also, and it was always a thing, but hopefully it will also decrease the, "Hey, let us put up Christmas lights, let us put holiday lights on your home," signs that are still up in April and May and however long that goes. So with that, I will make a motion to adopt ordinance 06-2025, amending chapter 50 of the city code pertaining to signs.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Johnson, second by Councilmember Pershman. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 113-25, a resolution authorizing summary publication ordinance 06-2025.
Motion by Councilmember Pershman?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Mack. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes.
Then I'll make a motion to adopt a policy regarding temporary event signage on city-owned property.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Pershman and a second by Councilmember Pascoe. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate all the work on that one. All right, up next is 8.2, the 2025 Street Maintenance Project Bid Award. Ms. Smith, sorry.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Council.
Sorry, I was finishing...
I don't want to jump the gun on you.
No, feel free to jump away.
Yeah, so before you tonight, we have a couple actions here, all good news. We collected bids for the 2025 street project and then also received quotes for the Seal Coat Maintenance projects for this year. Got excellent pricing, so that's the good news. Everything is aligning very well with the, with the funding that we had programmed for the pavement management plan for 2025. So just as a reminder, we're looking at doing a full-depth reclamation of Sunny Ridge Drive, and then we switched to a full-depth reclamation on Carver Left Parkway. We had bid the side-street mill and overlays as alternates. That was a good idea that Brent had. I was concerned about the budget, but we got excellent bids, so everything worked out, again, as I said before. But so we're, in, in the end, we're doing all the project areas that we had originally contemplated with the pavement management plan. So we're not really getting behind for, for areas. As I noted, we, for the bids, we got five bids with the low bid from William Mueller &amp; Sons from Hamburg, Minnesota. And that came in, it came in at about $471,000, which did include those side-street alternates that I mentioned. And then for the Seal Coat Maintenance, we got four quotes in total. I didn't consider two of them total quotes, so I omitted those, but we got two good quotes with the low quote from Allied Blacktop Company of Maple Grove. They do a lot of seal coating work, so I have no issues with, with them performing the work for us here this year. So attached in the council memo is the funding summary for the year, and all the enterprise fund ones are coming in, you know, under real close. And then the street maintenance fund is within $5,000 of what we had originally planned. So total project, cost-wise, we're looking at coming in about $60,000 under budget for 2025, so all good things. I think that's about it, so I would entertain any questions, but I would recommend moving forward as planned.
All right, any questions, comments?
Is there anything in 2025 gave us a deal that we would want to use any money we thought we might have spent to get other projects done at a better price?
So really, the, the big savings that I found were the price for the reclamation process itself came in quite a bit lower than what I had estimated, and then the bituminous pricing, so the price per ton of bituminous mix was like $10 per ton less than what I'd estimated. So I think I mentioned that before, you know, mixed pricing for the asphalt is always kind of the wild card. And fortunately for us, you know, Mueller is, is right here in town, and if they, if they want a project, they, they can pretty much get it. So they put a really good number on bituminous, and so I guess that would be the only other thing is, if we want to try to do more work, we'd get probably a decent price on the paving itself. So that being said, we don't technically have additional money for it programmed in this year, but that would be something the council would have to consider, so...
I mean, really, we're looking at $60,000. Like, what can we do for $60,000? Is that kind of where you're thinking?
Well, what can we do for $60,000, and should we do it in 2025 if we're getting...
Right.
A deal...
Right.
On this kind of work, because things only go up in price typically? Yeah, that's another discussion, but I wanted to understand a little better why we got a deal.
on this kind of work? Because things only go up in price typically. Yeah, that's another discussion, but I wanted to understand a little better why we got a deal.
Yeah. And so when you think about like the type of work you'd probably want to do, you'd probably want to pave, repave or do more pavement work. And from the street maintenance fund itself, you know, we're sitting in, you know, plus five thousand dollars to plan. So if you wanted to add additional paving, then that's where I'm saying that you need additional funding in that, in that bucket in particular. So but, you know, we were considerably under on the, unlike the enterprise fund projections. So.
Oh, I was just gonna make a motion if we were.
Yeah.
You do? Or, oh, okay. So I'm, I'm just, I'm going to make a motion to award a contract to W M Mueller and Sons, Inc. the amount of four hundred and seventy one thousand, seventy one dollars, forty two cents for the twenty twenty five street improvement project.
I'll second.
Motion by Muck, second by Pershman. Any further discussion? Really good work on this. Great idea to pull off those items as alternates and I'm glad it worked out. I always love it when you're over. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to accept the quote from Allied Blacktop Company in the amount of ninety three thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and sixty cents for the twenty twenty five seal coat and fog seal project.
I'll second.
Another motion by council member Muck, second by council member Pershman. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, timing. It says summer through.
Yeah, so
Anything more specific?
I don't, I don't have a schedule from them yet, obviously, but I will let you know that the completion dates that I had set forth in the contracts were October seventeenth for the street project itself and then for the seal coat projects, that was August twenty ninth. So we'll, we'll talk to these two contractors and get a schedule from them, but those are the dates when they, in theory, need to be done by.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we've got the Summer Gate trunk fee agreement.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, a motion is before you to enter into a trunk utility line charge prepayment agreement with Tollison Land Holding LLC. So Tollison is Summer Gate, so thinking about Summerfield, the neighborhood that we're starting to see some development applications for southwest of town. We've been working towards this for several years. In twenty twenty four, we did a really comprehensive look at the city's utility system, identified some gaps, move forward in twenty twenty five with a trunk area charge, which can fund the utility gaps to allow for development in areas of town that previously have not been serviceable, usually due to a utility gap. So we've done a significant amount of work to get us to this point. Summer Gate has been in for concept plan for their neighborhood called Summerfield. They're in for annexation. We'll have an annexation, an annexation agenda item on your next council agenda at May nineteenth for their phase one of the project area. So as part of this project, we have identified that this project is going to be expensive and it's large to get the utility connection to the southwest growth area. I think in the memo, it's at like five point two five million dollars. So we have been working with Summer Gate on prepayment of a portion of their fees to allow us to cover some of the design fees that Bolton and Mink will do to design the services that will extend from currently the bluffs down to the service area. So the agreement tonight is for Summer Gate to prepay four hundred thousand dollars of their trunk area charges. So fees that they would pay at the time of plating earlier, so we can fund some of the early work we need to do for the trunk area utility extension. So the agreement is in the packet tonight. We've obviously been working really closely with Casey at Summer Gate to get to a point where we all feel comfortable. Dave has drafted the agreement, reviewed it several times. There is an agreement, part of the agreement is that if we don't award bid by twenty twenty seven, we'll owe Summer Gate two hundred thousand dollars back. We're anticipating that we'll move forward with bid in twenty twenty five. So not a staff concern at this moment, but if things change or if we need to pivot a little bit, we'll obviously keep you involved with the process. But the agreement again tonight would have Summer Gate prepay four hundred thousand dollars of their trunk area charges to help us pay for some of the design fees for that utility connection from the bluffs to the southwest growth area. The agreement's in the packet, the concept plan's in the packet. So I'll open it up for discussion.
Questions, comments?
Just gonna, Mayor Council, just add one piece so that, and this is an item Andrew will have related to the design proposal, but one of the pieces that's embedded in here is that we're anticipating, anticipating around a two hundred thousand dollar improvement to the future Creekside Park. So as we were kind of looking at this project, we realized that if we wait to bring sewer through Creekside Park, all the improvement, the entrance road and a lot of the grading work that you're completing this spring would all be ripped up in about a year. And so rather than that, we're getting a quote from Hinch's to bring that sewer through the park so that it's completed, so that you don't have to go back and rip that up, close down the park, have construction access, et cetera. So two hundred and fifty of that two hundred thousand, then there's the design fee. So as if you recollect, talking about trunk fees and are these folks going to be committed? We represented to Summer Gate and their leadership that the city council is going to be looking for some skin in the game, I think the council was talking about. And so this is a representation of four hundred thousand dollars, close to a half a million dollars that they're committed to moving forward with this project. In essence, part of this is paying for the construction of that first phase, if you will, of that extension of that utilities down to the southwest area. And then the second part is the design fees that will go into developing the big project. I think we're estimating around another four hundred, some four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional trunk line fees that will come in when the property is actually planted. So there'll be additional funds to assist with future debt service on that account, much less other phases and other parts of the community that will be paying those trunk line fees.
I have a question. So when, under financials, it says if the city does not award contract by such and such date, the city will refund two hundred thousand. Just help me understand why it were two hundred thousand played in there from four hundred to two.
It was a request the developer was adamant that there be some type of piece that they're not just going to cut a blank check for four hundred thousand. And then what happens if the city doesn't initiate the project? But we weren't agreeable to putting that much on the line, understanding there are still processes and procedures and approvals that the council has to do. So I would view that as an act of good faith. They said, okay, two hundred thousand, even though, excuse me, that they're assured that the project is going to move forward because there are steps already kind of taking place, if you will, that allow that to happen.
Okay. So they're basically, they're willing to gamble two hundred thousand on us.
Yeah, that was the number. Of course, it's better that we're not giving all four hundred thousand back. And I think it was really a negotiation and I know Brent had a lot of conversations with Casey. You know, either way, whatever they pay and whatever is not refunded is going to be credited toward that property when it comes time for them to develop. So I think they recognize that, but to Brent's point, they wanted the city to have some skin in the game as well. And so there was a little give and take with that. That's where, I don't think there was any magic to the two hundred thousand, although that's where they kind of.
I mean, roughly the, we don't have a number for the utilities, like physical connection, but let's just say for whatever reason, everything gets turned upside down and it doesn't move forward. Well, the city has two hundred thousand dollars of additional new infrastructure. So that ties out roughly to that two hundred thousand that if we don't use it for them, for whatever reason, that we would reimburse for that number. So that was kind of the, the loose fitting correlation.
Okay, that's fine. I just didn't know why they didn't match. And that explains it. Okay. I'm okay with them not matching, but I just want to know why.
Kayla? No questions. Let's see. I think this is great. This is exactly what we're looking for from Summer Gate and Casey and his colleagues was that skin in the game. And it makes sense, as you kind of described, that they want to see a little skin in the game. From us, this is a big amount of money. Although I did the math and it looks like it's about a hundred and twenty one repayments of this fee. My questions relate just a little bit more to the project, but when this goes in, will this help remedy the issue that those folks on Overlook Drive have with their, I don't know what the infrastructure piece is called, but I know it's problematic down there.
Yes, there's a lift station over there that'll be eliminated with the project.
And then they will never have
Correct.
more issues. Okay, great. And then.
Never a big word.
Never issues with a lift station because it won't exist anymore.
That's what I meant. And then timeline of the project, we have to put this to bid sometime this year, or we're anticipating putting this to bid sometime this year, but when are we thinking it'll?
I think what Erin meant to say in the memo is twenty twenty six.
Darn it.
Oh, okay.
Cause Brent didn't read it.
Okay.
Correct.
And we haven't been to twenty twenty seven to do that? Okay.
Another thing to consider, the way that we've been talking about it is this project is really in two buckets. So there's the utility extension. And then there's the county road improvements from perhaps maybe even Fourth Street all the way down to past Overlook Drive to the entrance, depending upon where the county goes, but it's utility improvements, county road improvements, including the roundabout at eleven and forty. And so there'll be one project, but we're going to be working to integrate those two into one thing, because when you dig the utilities, then you want to take care of the street. And so as far as kind of like tentacles for this project, there are going to be a lot of them. And so our hope we've been, we're talking about the spring of, or the fall of twenty six to like be connected, but it's probably going to bleed into the spring of twenty seven because we're going to be working with the county and their, the county has a cost share policy as it relates to street improvements and legs of an intersection and who pays. And so that'll be another opportunity or, and we've talked about that with the Summer Gate folks where they're going to have to sign off on those and whatever the county doesn't cover, then Summer Gate will have to cover as it relates to county road improvement. So long story short, two big projects into one, hopefully maybe bid next spring-ish. Yeah. When we look at the next agenda item, we were anticipating the preliminary design work will be done by the end of the year and then we'll move into the final plans over the winter. So.
Okay. So I'm sorry, construction on all of that utilities and JCP in twenty twenty six.
At least some part of it, yes.
Okay.
We, I mean, the, our, the hesitancy here is we haven't had our kickoff meeting with the county. We don't know what they're going, if they're, you know, there's an option for them, you know, just to kind of do the minimum to kind of service the development and the additional traffic. Or they could do, want to do the full build out from eleven and forty to Fourth Street West. And because we don't know what those pieces are, hesitant related to like the bid, the bid climate of over promising and under delivering. So I don't really, I don't think we're prepared to give you a a construction time period yet because we don't know enough about the project.
Okay. If we're at all able to put our foot on the scale of the county, it would be my strongest preference to do all of that in one fell swoop rather than fourth, the county road forty, then county road forty, or however that gets chucked out. But I, we all know road construction is harder than you would ever think. And I like to be hard all at once instead of two consecutive summers or every other summer for the next six years.
Yep, we could carry that message.
And then, let's see. If we're talking about construction on this in next summer or later, how does that, you kind of talked about how it matches up with the park, but will the park work still be able to be done this year?
Are you talking about Creekside? Yeah, we plan on doing that like this spring, summer. We want to, that, we want to get fast track so that the park can be opened and ready to go.
Okay, so we'll do a little bit of this project?
Just through Creekside Park.
Okay, got it. Okay, great. I, that's the part I was struggling to understand. All right. Now that we're through that, I will make a motion to, let's see, enter into a trunk utility line charge prepayment agreement with Tollison Land Holdings LLC.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Johnson, a second by council member Pershman. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Moving on to Southwest Utilities Extension Project Proposal for Design Services. Mr. Simmons making his debut presentation. No pressure.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight before you, we have the Southwest Infrastructure Utility Improvement Scope of Work provided by Bolton and Mink, timely in our discussion of the previous council item. So here we kind of have an overview of what the scope kind of includes, agency coordination, survey, soil borings, preliminary design, cost estimating. So there's a lot of work that goes into a project of this size. So kicking this off as early as possible to meet deadlines of the previous item is imperative. So kind of project schedule is, tonight is May fifth, council approves scope of work. And then we can begin that preliminary design work through the rest of the spring and summer, fall, and hopefully we can get to winter, we can go through final design and get it bid out next spring.
Questions? Any motions?
We're gonna make it really easy on you this time. All right, I'll make a motion to approve scope of work from Bolton and Mink for Southwest Infrastructure Utility Improvements Preliminary Design in the amount of two hundred and forty nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Motion by council member Muck. I'll second. Second by council member Pasco. Any further discussion? Sorry, we didn't have any questions for you. We're making it harder on you for your first.
Great delivery, man.
I think they teed it up pretty good.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to communications. Who wants to go first?
I have zero.
All right, Chrissy.
The HPC meeting this month is canceled. I have nothing other than that.
Kayla?
I have nothing to add.
Wow, you guys were so quick. I'm not quite ready for you. All right, my updates. Last Tuesday, April twenty second, we did an Earth Day hike to the Cheese Cave. Had a good turnout for that. Lots of folks who have heard about it and are super interested in figuring out where it is. Last Friday, the twenty fifth, we had Carver County Community Leaders, that's the mayor and city manager administrator for the four communities that are in the school district along with the county and of course the schools. And we had it at Carver Elementary, got some updates. Really good meeting where we had some updates from the school district, talking about their possibilities of having to go out for an ask this fall that they're still trying to work through. They're going to be doing a survey. I forgot what they said, the timing of it, but I think it's going to be a little bit shortly here to kind of figure out what the environment is like as they go out, as they're kind of preparing for that, that ask and making that decision on if they'll do that or not.
Can I ask you a question about the survey?
You may, but I'm not sure that I'll know the answer.
Sure. Well, one had come out and I had received it, I think, I don't know, like a text or an email that there was a link and it came out a couple of months ago. Were you aware of that one? Do you know if that was actually like school sanctioned or?
I don't, what was the topic?
It was a school referendum one and it just kept going and going.
So they, I'm almost positive that they use Morris Leatherman and he does phone surveys, as we know.
Okay, so this was probably just
Yeah.
a random.
I don't think it was our school district.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah. Do you have any information on that? Also, last Friday was Lions Pork Chop Dinner, always a good meal from the Lions. Let's see, last week on April thirtieth was the first responders' luncheon. That's something that the Southwest Metro Chamber has done for the last three years and they honor first responders from all of our communities. So Chaska Police and Fire, the fire departments, the Carver County Sheriff. Doug Alea from Carver Fire was the firefighter that was represented. Doug has got like the top call response rate. He's an amazing operator. So really, really worthy of this award. Also, another fun call out, if you guys remember Deputy Katie Sandberg from the Carver County Sheriff's Department, who is now Detective Katie Sandberg. She was the honoree from the sheriff's department. So really cool to see her get some recognition as well. Let's see, in addition, that afternoon, we, Kayla and I both went to the groundbreaking at Carver Oaks. And it was this really cool moment because they had Deb Barber from that council was there, John Fahey was there. I forget his name, but he was the like associate. I forget his name, but he was the like Associate Commissioner of Housing because it's Michelle, or Jennifer Ho couldn't make it. But all of these folks are saying Carver is an example of how to do affordable housing done right. And it wasn't just one person, it wasn't just two people, it was person after person after person who said it, which was like a tremendous feather to have in our cap and really cool to hear that, especially given our history and kind of that area and the approval process for the preceding building, and that being Carver Crossing, really cool to hear that. So I kind of went into the weekend just being really proud of the work that everyone in this room has done on that project because people are watching and we are an example of how to do things right. So really cool to see that. I also had a feeling, and I shared this with Aaron afterwards, of like, this is great, and we've known that these two kind of additional buildings have been coming for quite some time, but like, hmm, now what? Like what's next? Because this isn't like a one and done, or in this case a three and done, we're going to continue to have this need. So Aaron told Allison, yep, you better buy yourselves some more land because we need more affordable housing. So really great event, but really, really fun to hear that, that feedback from the folks who know what they're talking about. May first, there was a chamber event at Parley Lake Winery that I went to. I had mayor's office hours last Saturday, May third, which I had a good attendance for that. And then this morning, we had a Lake of Minnesota Cities Executive Committee meeting. Been keeping me busy, so. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Nobody has anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilmember Mock?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pascoe? Any, all, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, good evening.